All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm Clark, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greg.
Here.
Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember McBride. Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seekings. Councilmember Tinkler. Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Appel. Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Mayor Cogswell.
Here. I'd like to ask Councilmember Mitchell to give the invocation and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, since we have so many different religions here, I'm going to ask someone for silence, room of silence, and pray the way that you normally pray in your religion. Thank you. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just some housekeeping. In terms of emergency exits, we have doors here and here. There is not a door over there. Something will recur. Please make your way down the stairs and out the front door of the building. Do not use the elevator. Moving on, we have no presentations and recognitions, so we're going to move into public hearings. Christopher Morgan with the Planning Department will be presenting on the screens, and afterwards, we will have public hearings. I'm asking councilmembers to hold questions and comments till after the public hearings, and we'll take them all at once. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first public hearing is actually from the Public Service Department, and it's about the closing of a portion of a road, a portion of Hollydale Court on Johns Island, and the tax map numbers are listed in your agenda. And this is just up for public hearing, as any kind of road closure is. I do know that there is the, part of the reason for this closure is to create greater connectivity, parallel to Maybank Highway here. It's going to connect to the east to the Live Oak Square Commercial Development and allow the new development that's going on around the Hollydale Court area to be better connected as well. So, and I think Tom O'Brien may be online. I think I saw his name come up, but I don't know if he has anything to add, or Julian.
Mr. Mayor, Julie's got any questions we may have.
Apologies, I'm pinching for Tom who had an emergency this evening, so I'm covering for him. He did want you to know that, so part of this public hearing is to send out the notices to all of the utilities, to city staff, to neighboring counties, to see if they have any objection to providing or to closing this roadway and deeding it to the adjacent property owners, which by the way, it is the developer who's building this out, and they are going to be building the interconnectivity road here. But this property is, this road is Maybank Highway. It's in between Monero, which is a lovely restaurant, and then also another place called Blue Oyster. But we, the staff is advocating for this. This is going to be a really good connectivity road for the city.
And then we will start in with the zonings and the rezonings and the zonings. And we start with public hearing number two. This is at 1528 Folly Road. It's about 5.9 acres, and this is a request to rezone a portion of it from SR1 to CT, commercial transitional fronting on Folly Road, and then the rear portion would go to SR2, which would match the properties on either sides of it. And this is a site, the area that would be CT has previously been used for event space, and there were some issues with business licensing, the event space, because you can't really have an event space in a property that's not zoned in a commercial category. So they chose the least intense category that they could go to to get the business license for the event space, and that is CT, and then the undeveloped portion of the property they were keeping as, or they would go to SR2. Just a couple of images of the site. It's in our suburban designated area in our comprehensive plan. And then just some info about those two districts that it's going to, and then just an image of it on Folly Road, and that's the facility that said the events in it. And our Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of this request. And then we're going to move on to the next one, public hearing number three. This is at 7 Van Broost on the peninsula, and it actually doesn't front on Van Broost. It's in the middle of the kind of super block of King, Calhoun, St. Philip, and Van Broost. It's owned by the College of Charleston. It's shown as hatched here. It's behind the church that fronts on King Street, and then behind some other dormitory buildings. It actually consists of some of the old one-story buildings that were there when the site had a Sears on it, and those buildings would be torn down. This would be a height change on the property from the existing Old City Height District of five stories to the Old City Height District of six stories. And this is to build a dorm on the site, and I'll just zip through some images. This is in our city center, so that would be the location that would have the tallest buildings of the city. So that's in line with the comprehensive plan, just a comparison of the two height districts. And then aerial image of the site, and this is the view from St. Philip Street. And the applicant did provide some slides. I'll just zip through these. If there are other questions later about it, I can certainly go into these. But this just shows the difference in the height on the site and how it relates to the historic church fronting on King Street. And there we have some images there, and I'll just zip through these. So very little of the future building would actually be seen from outside that kind of super block. And Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. And then we will move on to out at Wapu and Savannah Highway. There are a couple of requests here. These relate to the swap in the land that's going on here. It's bringing some properties in the city and also getting our West Ashley Bike Way in a more prominent location with a better connection to Wapu Road and better connections to the ultimate connection down Wapu to the West Ashley Greenway as well. Right now, because this was Park's property and it had the Greenway on it, it had been zoned conservation, but the rezoning would allow for general business on this. And again, we're doing a swap. I'll show you some images in just a minute that show how that swap will work. This is, it shows this park because it was assumed it was always going to be a park. And with the development there, just comparison between conservation and general business and aerial image of it. Again, it's just got the Greenway on it. Here's an image of the, I'm sorry, the Bike Way on it. And this is from our DuPont-Wapu Community Plan. This was an idea for how this corner could be reworked, and we're following through on some of that, again, turning the West Ashley Bike Way towards Savannah Highway and fronting at the corner of Savannah Highway and Wapu. So you get better connections and better prominence of the West Ashley Bike Way in that location. And just some other images from the plan in West Ashley that showed some ideas for how this corner could be handled as well. And again, these were all inspiration for what is going to be happening at the corner. And just an overall image of the West Ashley Bike Way here. And some other images of ideas for how the site could be developed. And when you see the West Ashley Bike Way heading out towards Savannah Highway, you know, the corner, and that will be protected from land location for the West Ashley Bike Way with the buildings behind it. Planning Commission did review this and recommend an approval, and then there's a related zoning. This is newly annexed property that would come in the city and also be zoned with the old edge designated area and the image of that site next to the Bike Way, and Planning Commission recommend that change as well. Now we'll go to Johns Island. This is at 771 Brownswood Road. It's an old tomato shed that would come into the city. It was agriculturally zoned in the county, come in the city and be zoned for business park, and they plan to reuse the existing building and have other light industrial type business park uses on the site. Business park also does not allow for residential, so we thought it was an appropriate category for an older industrial building at the edge of the urban growth boundary in this location. And just an image, again, it's in the suburban edge designation in the comprehensive plan. So as low density as you can get is the recommendation. And just an image of the tomato shed and that's parking area. And Planning Commission did recommend approval of that request as well. Now we move into some of the annexed single-family houses, and I'm just going to zip through these really quickly. 421 Wapu Road would come in the city as STR, single and two-family residential. Then we have 1916, let me get to that one, 1916 Second Drive, which would come in the city also as STR, just up from the Wapu and Savannah Highway intersection. And there's the image of the building there. And then we have 2435 Trent Street, recent residential annexation that would come in the city as SR1. And then we have the image of the property. And then we have 1850 Westfield Road in West Ashley, and that would come in the city as SR1. Just images of that property. And then we have 339 Wapu Road would come in the city as SR1. Image, and then 1983 Holiday Street would come in the city as SR1. Those images there. And then finally, 1835 Overdale Drive would come in the city as SR1 as well. And all these were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and those are the public hearings for today.
All right, so we are now ready for public hearings. We do need to hold off, I believe, on item number six, E6, correct?
Yes, just for, when it comes to council, we'll need to hold the vote because there's an annexation related to it.
So any questions, comments from councilmembers?
Or actually, if we want to, if you want to do the public hearings first, I think we just had one person sign up to speak. Was there anyone else who needed to speak on the public hearings that Mr. Morgan just reviewed? We'll have citizens' participation later. This is just for public hearings. All right, we just had one person. Did you want us to set a time limit?
Yeah, we'll give them a minute and a half.
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
So I'm kind of planning enabling that. We're talking about growth. And so this is documents here supporting my position. Where's the police officer? Thank you. No, you give it to him, yes. Okay, so I reviewed a couple of line items in terms of this. What I did see, okay, was a resiliency plan. I was at the Advisory Committee for the Resiliency Plan on Water in terms of the comprehensive plan with your water policy. Secondly, with the Army Co-Engineers adding to this. All these events we're having, you're adding, again, you're adding, you're adding capacity. At some point, you have to consider at some point that all these events we're having, okay, that we may have to look at a temporary or some type of gradual moratorium in order to be able to assist other citizens who are having problems with getting flood insurance and home insurance because of these events. So I hope that you look at it from a comprehensive standpoint, because one of the, one of the major deals did not go through the community development at all. Corey Esquire didn't go through it at all. And we cannot have working people, existing residents, paying for growth. We cannot pay for developers. They got to pay their own way, and I hope that we begin to look at it that way. Thank you.
And those are all the speakers that we have.
Any questions, comment from councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval on all items except item six?
Yes.
We have a motion found properly seconded. Any comments? Councilman Brady?
Yep, I just had a quick question, Mr. Morgan, on number seven that was in my district. I think I saw up there it was zone R4 in the county, which is curious why STR and not SR1?
Yes, it has STR nearby in the surrounding neighborhood, so we typically try to match some of the surrounding neighborhood with zoning. Yeah.
So we have a motion properly seconded?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, on number three, which is actually Councilmember Mitchell's district, but right adjacent to mine. I just want to point out, this project is doing exactly what we have intended for a long time, which is to move students out of the neighborhoods and closer to and adjacent to campus. This project certainly accomplishes that. We take the long road, not the short road to get there. And I would say, the only comment I would have is, have we given them enough height on this one? But again, I think it's appropriate, but I think, and Councilmember Bowden and Tank was the one who pointed that out. I think it could use even a little bit more as we think about what's going on on the campus. But this is a very good thing for the management of students in and around the city and putting them close on campus. Safer, better, more efficient, all that. Thanks.
Councilman Mitchell?
Mayor, Councilmember, I concur with that because we were talking about this a long, long time, trying to assist them in having students there and getting out of the community where we have a lot of problems. So I don't have a problem with that, and I refer to Councilman Seekings because normally he is there at a rank of our meeting. And so I don't have a problem with it, and we can go forward with that. So if they want to change it to another height, be a look at it very seriously. And, but right now, we'll go along with the six stories right now.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion that's been properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. All right, moving on, approval of council minutes. We have a motion, and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, ayes have it. We're now on to citizens' participation period. Please note that this participation period is limited to 30 minutes by code. Any person who speaks at city council meetings shall conduct him or herself in a manner appropriate for the decorum of the meeting and is asked to observe Section 2-28A of the Code of the City of Charleston Rules of Decorum. Violation of the rules of decorum may or probably will result in losing the opportunity to speak before council and/or removal from the meeting. So again, folks, we just ask that you have decorum. We appreciate different perspectives and opinions. We appreciate the passion. We just ask that people be respectful. So, Madam Clark, how many people we have signed up?
We have 14.
We have 14 people. We'll give a minute and a half, a minute and a half for each speaker. Please respect the time limits, and who do we have first?
We have, we'll do our in-person lists first. Anthony Bryant?
War on drugs. It's like the war in Gaza. You have a war, innocent people get hurt. I've seen for 50 years of my life, black folk innocent get hurt in the war on drugs. And so I did an informal brief to the court as a pro se informal pop litigant, intentionally for reasons for four years, to show the disparities in the court system as far as time and cost. And as you see, everything, got 65 acres of land, something going to prove it, and nothing going to keep getting nothing. Okay, so that means we're going to have a problem with at-risk unhoused, unhoused, and crackling housed by default. Now, what are you going to do about it? You're going to be men and women of honor and say, look here, it's a reversionary clause that happened years ago with the port to give it back to the city for public use? Are we going to let this guy come in, buy the Charleston place, buy everything, and look like might buy y'all? Okay, and I know some of y'all ain't for sale, for a fact. And I know you're going to put up one heck of a fight on behalf of the something and nothings. And he's a little advocacy right now. Be getting bullied right now by those that got power and access. How can the city South kind of throw it on y'all? They threw the whole deal on y'all, and they think y'all going to roll over and get us nothing. We need to get 15 acres minimum just to come back to us. Let's do what we want to do with it. Let's do what he wants to do.
Mohammed Dries?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Evening. I have a picture here of me and the mayor. And it says, there's hope in Charleston. And I told him that before he ran. The other mayor that was here, former Tekkenburg, peace and blessing of God be upon him, he wanted me to help him, but he didn't help me, and that's not politics. My objective is to get an area on the peninsula that is preserved for the African-American who have given so much to this city. I have a verse I like to read right fast. It's in Genesis. It's the 15th chapter and the 13th verse. And it say that no for surety that Abraham's seed should be in a foreign land, and it shall serve them for 400 years. Now, the seed of Abraham, Prophet Abraham, peace and blessing be upon him, is the Jews, the Christian, and the Muslim. Now, the Jews got their share on the peninsula. The Christian got their share. Now, we working for the Muslim to get their share. Now, on the 13th of April, we'll be presenting our case at Mall Park. We have help from the city, the police department, and we asking all the councilmen in here to come help us because we have helped y'all for more than
time.
35 years. Thank you.
Shane Julie?
Good afternoon. Hello, everyone. So today I just want to bring up some comments that have been made in response to us bringing a ceasefire resolution. One of them being that it is not the place of the City of Charleston or these councils to speak on international issues, and I'm just going to outright refute that right now as something we heard at the Hark meeting, which a councilmember said we should go to. We did. We heard, we listened, we spoke. Someone mentioned if we spoke on Palestine, we'd have to speak on Ukraine and other issues. The City of Charleston did. On February 25th of 2022, Mayor Teklenburg did put out a statement supporting the people of Ukraine. The late Brenda Scott penned a resolution denouncing South Africa's apartheid. So I just want to make that statement that it is completely within the City of Charleston to make a statement on this, and as well with recently the rally and resolution in support of Israel. So that's all I'm going to say on that, is that it is within the city's right and power to make a statement, to make a resolution on that. Thank you.
Tamara Nasser?
Hello, you guys have seen me all before. I am not sure if you guys are aware, but on March 23rd, actually Israeli Occupational Forces stormed El Shifa Hospital in the Gaza Strip, which was one of the last standing hospitals in the Gaza Strip, and actually committed atrocities across multiple boards. Dr. Mohammed Zaher Al Noo was actually executed in front of his patients for refusing to leave because he was in the midst of treating his patients, and for doing so, he was executed. There have been also multiple stories of women who have had sexual assault violence committed against them within that hospital, pregnant and otherwise. I come to you week after week to ask you if you condemn these clear violations of international law, and every single week you guys refuse to stand. So I'm asking everyone behind me, if you condemn these violent acts, to please stand now. Will you join us? Are you going to stand to condemn these violent acts that I come to you week after week describing? Because what I am seeing from you is that it's not the eyes that are blind, but the hearts. I can come to you with more statistics week after week, including the thousands upon thousands of children, men, and innocent women who have died, who have been murdered. Your silence is equivalent to condemnation. And as a Palestinian here in this city, you guys make me scared. I am uncomfortable to come here, as many of my Palestinian brothers and sisters are.
Time. Nakaliad Mallard?
The first Prime Minister, David Ben-Guron, stated in 1937, "We must expel Arabs and take their places, and then we have to use force not to dispossess the Arabs of the Nagavan Transjordan, but to guarantee our own right to settle this, in those places." Then we have force at our disposal. Our non-sofer and Israeli government consultant stated, "We must kill and kill every day, all day, every day." They are making it clear and simple. They have, from the start, they are committing an ethnic cleansing. They are taking every single humanitarian right that Palestinians have, food, water, even chocolate and paper. They have been stripping them of everything that makes them, makes us human since the very beginning. Israel is doing it without consequence and with help from the US. Why are we choosing to be complicit with the side of the oppressor? Why are we in favor of an occupation? Why do you, none of you condemn bulldozing of civilians and raping and killing of their women? At what point will it be enough for the United States to act? Because it will probably be too late, and we won't forget that all of you stayed silent, and you are all complicit.
Josh A.
Hey, everyone. Just wanted to take a moment of silence and appreciate what is being said right now.
Time. Katie Fitz?
I would like a chance to respond to some comments from within the council. Thank you for sharing. To the question regarding whether or not I am Palestinian, or alluding to the fact that I am not directly affected by what's going on, I reply with this. Whether or not I am Palestinian makes absolutely no difference. My words should hold no less weight. I speak for humanity. As to it not directly affecting me, I would beg to differ. My tax dollars are bombing children as we speak. My tax dollars are supporting an occupational regime. I am actively watching people starve to death. Literally, their cheeks are sinking in day by day. I hear stories of rape and torture of pregnant Palestinian women. I see my fellow healthcare workers detained, tortured, bombed, and killed. So please do not say that I am not directly affected, that my grief and anguish over the situation is somehow inconsequential and invalid. Standing up for Palestine has been a lonely venture. Many of us feel unsupported and alone, even amongst our own family and friends. And it takes a lot of courage to come and speak with y'all. The mental toll on us is not easy. Enough is enough. Vote for humanity. Vote for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Ariana Rucker?
Hello, my name is Ariana Rucker, and I am calling to stand with my brothers and sisters demanding an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. And to what my colleague Katie and Shane both said, this has everything to do with every single one of you sitting here. People getting murdered has everything, every single thing to do with everyone you're sitting here. Our tax dollars are being contributed to actively aid in the genocide of innocent women, men, and children. If you are okay with that, look at yourself and tonight in the mirror and be okay with that. I'm not, and that's why I'm here standing before you, demanding a permanent and an immediate ceasefire. Thank you. I'm not, and that's why I'm here standing before you, demanding a permanent and an immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Matt Mossberg.
Council members, it's difficult to add to the comments that have been made tonight. It's difficult to add to the comments that we continue to make every meeting that we attend. There's nothing trivial about what we're doing here. There's nothing that I can even understand as controversial about what we're asking. As it's been stated, our actions here as American citizens, as citizens of Charleston, have an impact around the world. And it is appropriate that we come here and demand that you, our representatives, speak for us because when you don't, our voices are silenced. And that, as far as I'm concerned, isn't democracy. So if you are here claiming to value democracy, to be representatives of the people, then we're all still here standing, waiting for you to demand a ceasefire. Thank you.
Taylor McElwain.
Hello, my name is Taylor McElwain and I am here once again to ask that the city council passes a ceasefire resolution. For months, your constituents have been coming here, educating you, informing you and deceiving you to pass the ceasefire resolution, which is truly the bare minimum. If the will of your constituents doesn't sway you and it doesn't appear to, I want you to think of what your children will say when they learn about this genocide in the future. When your children come to you after learning about the white phosphorus usage, the sexual violence perpetrated by Israeli soldiers, the targeting of hospitals, refugee camps, schools and aid centers. They will ask you what you did, how you used your position to make change. When that day comes, if you do nothing and remain silent, you will think of this moment, how you stayed silent, how you chose political clout over human rights, how you ignored the will of your constituents who have made it exceedingly clear that this is an important issue to us. I want you to remember these moments when you tell your children that you sat in silence, refused to make eye contact, looked at your phone week after week. Once again, as your constituent, I ask that you pass the ceasefire resolution and support a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Palestine and the end of the occupation of Palestinian land. Thank you.
And we will move on to our online list. Dr. Sifana Sitiki.
Hey, everyone. I'm here with Free Palestine Charleston to ask that you pass our resolution for immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I'm passing around a copy of the ceasefire resolution that we've drafted and emailed to everyone months ago. So hopefully you've already read this, but if not, it's pretty short. You can read it right now. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I wanted to bring it up because at the recent Hark Commission meeting that we went to, there was a lot of misinformation about what we are calling for, what we are asking for. And you know, this is again, once again, this is not a religious issue. This is an issue of humanity. This is calling for a ceasefire is a stance of neutrality. It's a stance for humanity and against violence altogether. So the other thing I want to point out on this resolution is the number we're asking you to condemn the death of twenty thousand civilians. Since we wrote this, another ten, that's another ten thousand. The American community, the American government is falling behind the international community. The international community, the UN supports a ceasefire. Our government is falling behind us. There's no need for Charleston to fall behind. It's time we call for a ceasefire. We have it all in writing. We have it all done for you. Meet with us, talk with us. We're going to keep showing up. Thank you.
Marcus McDonald.
My name is Marcus McDonald, leader organizer of Charleston Black Lives Matter, also a Free Palestine Charleston. Some of y'all, some of y'all are talking real reckless to a lot of members of us saying how dare we disrespect the politicians and say that y'all don't, that y'all support what's going on. And my question is, how dare y'all wait this long? We would come here every day, every Charleston City Council meeting, even on the off weekends, y'all said nothing. What is your job? Y'all ask for respect, but y'all do nothing to give respect. A lot of y'all have been moving cowardly and no respect about that. And also, it's nothing but a resolution. Y'all made several of them in the past since we've been calling for it. Y'all could do it right now if y'all wanted to. Stop acting like it's a hard process. We done gave you everything, as Dr. Sifana said before. Please stop disrespecting our intelligence. Y'all can make it happen if y'all wanted to. And if y'all cared about Palestinians as much as y'all did Israelis, y'all have made about forty resolutions at this point, but y'all meant none. And y'all say y'all feel unsafe leaving city council. How do you think Palestinians in Charleston and Gaza and in West Bank feel walking to get food, walking to get water? How do you think they feel? You talking about you feel unsafe? Get over yourself. And pass this resolution. Stand on the right side of history right now. That's all I have to say.
Anna Rucker.
Those were all the speakers that we had. We did receive two comments online from Mr. Bryant and he already spoke this evening. We also received a letter from former councilmember Shade requesting deferral of item M nine and requesting the formation of a blue ribbon committee to study the feasibility of the city conducting its own elections. Those were all the comments we received.
All right, moving on, we have petitions and communications. We have one agenda item here and Louis Copeland is available if council has any questions, but it is the approval of a settlement agreement between Martin Sprock and the city of Charleston. We have a motion and a second commentary.
I just have to state for the record that I have to recuse myself from this matter, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Repel. We have a motion and a second, one abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Bye.
We have two nays. Eyes have it.
And just for the record, the nays were councilmembers Shealy and Parker.
Correct. We have no council communications. We have no consent agenda items. We are now moving on to council committee reports. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Bill's up for second reading. There are nine items up for second reading.
Can we take one through eight together?
We have a motion to take items one through eight. All right, we have a motion and a second to take one through eight together. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Third reading.
We have a motion for approval for items one through eight. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Mr. Mayor, now we need to go back and approve item E six that we were holding for the annexation. That was Brownswood Road.
We have a motion properly second for E six. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
And third reading.
And we are on.
And we need to do the vote for a third reading. For E six.
Third reading vote for E six. We have a motion in a second. Appreciate your patience. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. We are now on two bills up for first reading.
Item nine.
Oh, item nine. I'm sorry.
I'd like to move to defer item nine.
We have a motion and a second. Any commentary on this?
As part of the motion, I would like to just ask that the administration come back with just kind of the cost proposals because we haven't been able to see any of that in terms of what are we currently paying the county elections commission to run the election? What would it look like if we took it on and then under the proposal to transfer it, what does that cost look like? Just so we can get a kind of current state, what could the future look like, both if we transferred it and not?
Copeland, do you have any color on that now?
So Isaac Kramer is here, the director from the Charleston County Election Commission, along with, I think, a member of the commission and their lawyer. So they can answer some questions on the floor, but if you want something prepared in writing, we can certainly do that, too.
I would prefer that it be prepared because I think there's also some ideas that some other council members have had as well around, you know, as an example, if we ran our own election, we wouldn't have to do all the precincts. What would it look like with consolidated precincts? So I think there's some questions that may come out you know, as we kind of move forward and then we can take this up because I don't know that there's a certain rush rush to get this done right now, so.
We have a motion and a second. Move for deferral. Any other commentary on this before we vote?
And who is the second? I missed the second on the deferral. Gregory, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I guess, I think Councilman Brady was asking this, but is there a deadline for us to make this decision?
Would it be? All right, if somebody from the county could, or John, Mr. Robinson, if you could speak to this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you. I'm John Robinson. I'm the lawyer for the county elections commission. Thank you for your discussion. We've also seen the letter from former councilman Shade that was forwarded to us today. And we would look forward to the opportunity to clarify some things that are contained in that letter. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in fact in a hundred and twenty day countdown, which is the county having given notice under the intergovernmental agreement that it will no longer provide election services. As you know, we don't, the county provides the staffing, the hardware, the software, the voting machines, generally what's at various precincts other than city volunteers. Approximately two weeks ago, the county provided notice to all of the constituencies and jurisdictions that do not currently have the county elections commission conducting and overseeing those elections. Again, we provide staffing, but not the ultimate decision that's made by MEC for the city of Charleston. And so respectfully, we're in that hundred and twenty days and we would continue to answer any questions, resolve any confusion. And of course, as we talked about, Mr. Kramer had some very top line numbers on the kinds of costs that would be reflected in what Councilman Brady has requested.
Mr. Robinson, can you tell us specifically what, where we are in the hundred and twenty day period?
I can look at a date, but we're probably at about a hundred and five, a hundred and four days.
Remaining?
Remaining, right.
Councilman Tinkler.
Isn't it significant when the next election is?
It is. That is why we went ahead and gave notice of termination quickly so that presumably this issue could be worked out before it becomes an issue with primaries and general elections.
So is it fair to say that the deadline is, I guess, when the next election is and not when the termination date is on the?
Well, the termination date would be that the county will no longer provide any of those services and it would be incumbent on the city presumably to have substitute services in whatever form that is. And be prepared to conduct that election in advance of the election.
So the practical deadline is to prepare for the next election?
I would say it is for the city of Charleston. For the county, again, we're, the notice of termination, the IGA is, we would not be in a position to provide those services if there was not a resolution.
And for clarity, Mr. Robinson, you all provided this notice to all other municipalities within?
Correct. It is not just the city of Charleston is not being singled out. This is a process of trying to consolidate and make elections uniform, which is a function of both the state election commission as well as our county delegation. And those notices have also gone out to Hollywood, the town of Sullivan's Island, which is also working on implementing this. Who am I forgetting? Then the town of Megget.
Any other questions for Mr. Robinson? All right, we have a motion that's been properly seconded for deferral. Councilman Waring.
Should we vote for the deferral? What type of information we gonna have between now and the next meeting?
As I understand it, it has been requested by Councilman Brady that we will, my office will prepare a memo that will define perhaps a little bit of the backstory, maybe a little bit more clarity than what Ms. Copeland has provided to date. Also, a rough cost analysis of what it would cost us to move over with the county versus setting up our own election machines and running our own elections and staffing that. Yes.
Do we have staff now that would do that? I mean, we're going to have to hire people. We're going to have to find volunteers. We're going to have to create an entire infrastructure. We're going to confuse everybody. I mean, you know, I understand that there's a lot of sensitivity around elections. I think we just need to move on from this. I mean, the county won. You know, they're going to get their way on this. I think we just need to accept that and, you know, keep an eye and if there's issues in the future, we can fix that later. But I just, it seems we're spinning our wheels on something that's not going to change.
I believe too, to your point, if we decide to break the agreement, that's within our right, too. We can always decide to set up our own election commission and election by the machines and the like. So it's not like this is a now or never situation. But happy, I think it's fiscally responsible to understand the economics. I'm certainly not opposed to that, though I would say I'm pretty safe to assume that it will be extremely expensive and complicated for the city to take this on. So we would have to be eyes wide open there. So we have a motion for deferral.
Mayor, Councilmember Parker has her hand up.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Copeland or the attorney for the county, can you just remind me, did anyone ever tell us, why did the county decide to make this change?
Thank you. The council, the county is in a process, the county election commission is in a process of trying to streamline elections, consolidate elections. The concern that many of us had that was mentioned about election integrity earlier to make sure that people have access to voting and that it's a matter of a part of routine. We've long had a hand in hand relationship with the MEC providing the services that they've asked. But the having elections that the county takes care of is expensive. There's also a legal issue that I believe Ms. Copeland has articulated that's been brought to us by the state election commission and the delegation that in the state election code, there's an ambiguity about the county providing the staff and all of the election services, but ultimately that election being overseen by an MEC and the position that that would put professionally trained folks who work for and are certified by the state in the event that there was a problem with any given election. So it's really a matter of uniformity, consolidation and certainly cost savings. And Mr. Kramer is here, if, I realize time is precious. If you wanted some of those top line numbers on the costs currently and what some costs might look like if the county, if the city decided to have its own unified election system, maybe some idea of what that would cost if you would entertain that.
I would.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I was given this request today, so I'm thankful that you've asked me to come provide the numbers. So the county charged the city to a little over two hundred thousand dollars in November. Ninety percent of that cost was personnel. So that cost is always going to be a city cost, no matter if you take authority or if we have authority. Ten percent was the equipment and I'm going to put, just give you numbers. We charged the city sixty-three, sixty-two oh eight to use the equipment, the scanners, the ballot marking devices, every, the poll books when you sign in, sixty-two hundred dollars. The annual maintenance contract on that is just under eighty thousand dollars a year. So you get a huge discount on that. The second thing, to start from scratch, if you were to say, we're going to do it, two point three million dollars to get everything you needed to conduct election. That's just the equipment. That includes the DS two hundred, so the scanners, you'll need sixty of those, five hundred express votes. You're going to need a ballot on demand printer. You're going to need a hundred and forty poll books. You're going to need to be trained on election wear, which you probably don't know what that is. That's okay. We handle this twenty-four seven. And you're going to need to be trained by the vendor and the experts. So you're going to have to hire staff who's capable of doing that. And the equipment takes up a lot of room. So you're going to have to find a facility to be able to test and prepare the equipment, to deploy the equipment. And also, you're going to have to hire all the poll workers from scratch because those poll workers will be working for Charleston County in other municipal elections. And just putting it in real quick perspective, I didn't even get to the personnel costs. That is just the equipment costs the city would incur versus sixty-two hundred dollars that was charged to the city. So you had a citywide election. That two hundred thousand plus was for a mayoral election where every single precinct was open. We had a lot of early voters. We had, I think, over fifteen, I mean, the mayor would know how many early voters there were. But the city is over a hundred thousand registered voters. That's a significant population of voters in Charleston County that we currently serve. in Charleston County that we currently serve. So as we continue this conversation, we're happy to, we're not saying the city has to turn over to the county, we're not saying that. Y'all can make that decision, but we wanted to give the notice properly, because if a special election occurs, I don't predict the future. I've seen people pass away, I've seen people resign for whatever reason, because of a business conflict, there are reasons why there may be a vacancy in office, we had one in 2022, 2023, January. So we can have council, so you just want to be prepared when you make your decisions, that hey, yes, 120 days, I think expires July 10th, but you could have a special election this summer, and you just want to be prepared for that. So those are just 2.3 million, and then you have annual maintenance agreement costs with the election equipment.
Thank you, and you can circulate that, we can distribute that, council members. You have a question, Councilman Tinkler?
So, the costs, are your assumptions based on the city purchasing equipment outright, or are there vendors that we can, we can go to?
Certainly, you could, you could definitely use a different vendor. I heard confusion would be happening, you know, voters voting on different equipment for different elections. Just to let you know, there's also a state house bill that would mandate the city to use state-approved equipment. So while right now that's maybe not a requirement, it's very likely that bill's going to pass by this session, and I can just say that the city can go ahead and procure equipment that then would be obsolete, and then a waste of money.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Greg had his hand up, I'm not sure if he still needs to speak.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a quick question, can you explain how the, as you know, I'm in Berkeley County and represent a section of the City of Charleston that's in Berkeley County, so explain how, how that authority would be divided between Berkeley County and Charleston County? I'm just trying to get some additional clarity on, on that letter we received today.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a great question, and it's not something we've not currently, we are currently doing that. Dorchester County, we share Somerville and North Charleston with. So with North Charleston, Charleston County has the majority of those voters, the ordinance from the city of North Charleston is, the county of Charleston certifies those elections. This is practice across the state, this is not brand new. So what would happen is, the county would certify the election Charleston, that is, but Berkeley County would still be providing to the voters in Daniel Island the same election equipment, the same poll books, and then we would be working hand-in-hand with Berkeley County, and then our board would ultimately certify the elections. So that's currently occurring in North Charleston.
Okay, thank you. So, just one more quick question, if you don't mind. So when you gave that estimate, was that just the, the equipment that Charleston County provided in the last election, or does that include the Berkeley County equipment as well?
No, that includes Charleston County for early voting and election day only, so Berkeley would be an additional cost to that.
So we would need to add a significant additional, because there's, what, four, four precincts or four voting locations in Berkeley County, and six or seven precincts, if I'm not mistaken, so, just something to consider. So the cost that he gave is the majority, but not all of it. Thank you.
Councilman Tinkler?
Sorry, I appreciate you coming in and answering some questions, but I mean, the cost that the city has paid so far, is that consistent with what we'd be paying going forward?
Yes, the cost would not change. The same bill the city received in any election would be the same. So just because our board actually, it might be a little bit cheaper, because we spend all the research time on the provisional ballots for the municipal election commission, and as Councilman McBride, he came to our office for the certification of elections, and I want to make that point very clear, because the city came to the county building to certify elections, and you got to witness the provisional ballot hearing, and how I was at the front, kind of like the clerk here, I was at the front giving the recommendations, like staff would give recommendations to municipal election commission. So ultimately, the trust is already there with the county, the trust has already been there, and we've had a great relationship with the municipal election commission, that, that has been years. But what our attorney said, was state law outlines a provision, that if the county is going to have any involvement in the election process, there has to be an ordinance. And while that may have not historically happened for decades, I wasn't here decades ago, and this was an issue that I brought up when I first became executive director in 2021, I met with some staff members, I met with the mayor at the time, and I put this on the radar. So this isn't something we're trying to bring out of left field, and just so you're aware, last night, Town of Hollywood, they passed first reading to transfer authority to the Board of Elections. So this is happening, and we're becoming uniform, and if at any moment in time, you say the county is not, we don't want to have that relationship anymore, council can get them right back to the table and create an ordinance to say, we don't, we don't want to have that relationship anymore with the county, you can pass the ordinance.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second to defer. Let's call for a vote on that. And so, all those in favor of deferring, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Nay, sorry, I guess.
Nay.
So we need to count there.
Yes, we may want to do a roll call vote.
Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Greg, this is for the deferral.
Nay.
Councilmember Shealy?
Nay.
Councilmember McBride?
Nay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Nay.
Councilmember Brady?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory? Councilmember Waring? Councilmember Sinkings? Councilmember Tinkler? Councilmember Bowden? Councilmember Appel? Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
Mayor Cogswell?
Nay.
All right, the motion fails.
Move for approval?
The motion's been properly seconded, all those in favor, want to do a roll call again? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have two nays.
All right, just for the record, I have council members Brady, Tinkler, were you an A? And was there anyone else who was an A? Councilmember Parker, were you an A as well? No, she was not an A, so it was just council members Brady and Tinkler.
Okay. So.
Point of, point of order, should we go for a third reading and ratification?
Yes.
We have motion, probably second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And I just, under the rules, would like to explain my vote, so it's in the record, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Two minutes or less. I appreciate my colleagues at least taking the time to consider it, but I think it's, you know, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more economic analysis, because you don't have to have a polling location at every precinct, it, there could have been consolidation. Again, it's a solution in search of a problem, where you have a nonpartisan election commission, which the City of Charleston has overseeing an election being moved to a partisan-based election commission, and that just strikes me as a fundamental change in how we begin to look at things where, you know, all of us sitting around the table, including the mayor, the partisan gloves have to kind of come off while we're sitting here in this room, because there's no Republican or Democratic way to fix a pothole, as we always like to say. So moving the actual nonpartisan election to a partisan commission just struck me as a matter that would have been better served with a little bit more scrutiny, I think, than we give it, but that doesn't change the outcome, and I respect that.
Councilman Tinkler?
And just to concur with Councilman Brady, but, you know, it's really just about understanding the value of transferring our elections over balanced with what the cost, and I voted nay simply because I didn't get a complete answer on, on what that cost is going to be.
Fair enough. Any other questions, comments related to this agenda item? Councilman Waring?
Yes, sir, you know, I want to give compliments to our county election commission, as a matter of fact, we not known as Florida. When's the last time we've been known to hang in chairs? We don't do that here. Thanks for bringing the cost forward, because that, that was an issue last time around, it's not an issue now. But you know, I got drainage on my brain, and every time I think of 1.1 million going south abroad, I think, boy, I shouldn't say south abroad, but going in another direction.
Can't directly reflect that nuts stuff a little bit there.
I think approximately, we can bond about $10 million with that, so I'm thinking 2.3, 200,000 for personnel, you know, you got to get leasing agreements, we right at $3 million on this thing, if we were to go in that direction, give a dollar or two, that's $30 million, folks, that can go someplace, drainage someplace throughout the city, so I got brainage, I got drainage on my mind, what can I say?
Okay, if there are no further questions or comments on that item, we're going to move on to bills for first reading, and there are no bills up for first reading, so we are, next council meeting, any else council meeting will be on Tuesday, April 9th, at 5:00 PM?
Move for adjournment.
Second, all those in favor, ayes have it, we're adjourned.